Nobody wants to volunteer.
No?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And I welcome you all for the Wareham Zoning Board Appeal for tonight's meeting for August 10, 2022. And it is 6:30 PM, and we are at room 320 of the Multi-Service Center. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far-right associate member, Mr. Troy Larson, my direct right, our clerk, Jim Acubachi, my far-left, our regular member, Mr. Richard Sample, myself, the Chair, Nazir Akolasi. Can I do some preliminary business? Won't take long, on the minutes.
Okay, so, on the minutes, I did review them. There were three sets of minutes. They're not here, I believe, correct?
They're not here.
I can always go to the office. The first set that I read listed me as absent, and then throughout the whole dialogue, it listed me as making comments. So I'm pretty sure I was there. Although, I'm often absent-minded, but I would think I was there. So we'll fix that. The second set looked fine to me. The third set, I recall that I literally was not there, so I can't say whether the minutes are good or not.
I thought it was good.
So the third one you saw?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I move that we accept them with the changes of me not being absent on the July 7, 2020 set, and the other two will be fine. I reviewed one. Rick reviewed the other. Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a discussion? I hear none. Do we have a second? Second?
My second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Also, for the record, we have Mr. Charles Rowley, a professional engineer consulting for the town of Wareham, and our Assistant Town Planner, Mrs. Monique.
Walden.
Walden. Okay, very well. On the continued public hearing for 23-22 for Keating, for 18 Highland Ave, they requested a continuance until next meeting. At the next meeting, as I said, I'm not going to be around, so that's going to be September. What's September, Monique?
Is it?
Well, actually...
There's another one in August, isn't there?
August, right. No, we continue to August 20...
24th.
24. And August 24, I won't be here, they have the right to go forward or continue it. So let's continue until 24.
I saw moved. Should we contact Keating and let him know that he could continue to the...
No, they could show up. Maybe they'll go with 4.
Go with 4, okay. Let him come in.
Yep. So I have a motion to continue until August 24, you said, Monique?
24th, yes.
24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. Mr. Freeman.
801 Main Street.
You know the deer, right?
Yes.
You want to go forward?
Yes. Let me just ask about that.
So let's read it for the record. We open. If you don't want to go forward, we continue. Let's read it for the record. All right, so it is 25-22 Village, Villages 801 Main Street LLC, comprehensive permit, MGL, Chapter 40B, 801 Main Street, Assessment Maps, map 88, lot 1011A.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 10, 2022, at 6:30 PM, in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition number 25-22 for a comprehensive permit under MGL, Chapter 40B, for Villages 801 Main Street LLC, to build eight rental units with seven affordable units and one market-rate unit located at 801 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Again, that appears on map 88, lot 1011A, in the MR30 district.
All right, cheers, Counselor.
Thank you. I assume you're asking about the presence of four...
That's your name, for the record.
For the record, Peter Freeman, attorney, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So with the four members, if we proceed, we would still need three out of four votes, because under 40B, that's all you need, a majority.
Right.
So, do you not have... Do you have a fifth member?
We do, but one of them's stuck in Boston, and one of them with her mother, she's very ill.
That's okay.
So it's totally up to you.
I did check with Mr. Scanlon, my client, and we'll go forward anyway. I'm just curious if you have the Mullen Rule whereby...
We do, but not... The Mullen Rule applies if the member attended the opening of the public hearing. So if they were here and they missed the second one, they could jump back in, but not at the opening.
You could well be right. I can double-check.
I am very sure.
But either way, we're willing to go forward if it turns out somebody else...
I'm very sure. So next time, even if they come in, they can jump in.
I hear you. That's fine.
All right, very well. Let's hear it.
All right, so, again, for the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant. And let me introduce the team who is here. John Scanlon, behind me, is the principal of the applicant LLC. With him is Nanette Perkins, project manager, working with him, who was incredibly helpful on this, couldn't have done it without her. And our engineer, our engineer, Rich Tabazinski, is here from Atlantic Design Engineers. And last but not least, builder and architect Greg Saruni, and to go through the project plans. So I'll be pretty brief, just a basic introduction. I know you know the drill, you folks, on 40B. So our application is complete, and we included the list of waivers, which sometimes are addressed at the first hearing, but certainly can be addressed later after you get a better feel for things. We don't think that there's anything too complicated, and actually, as 40Bs go, there are not tons of waiver requests. So the site is three-quarters of an acre. There is an existing house and a barn, and they're being renovated. They will be part of the project. The project is...
If I may, is a part of the big project?
No, it's right abutting.
That's completely separate project.
It's completely separate.
I get you.
Separate ownership, but that is the location, which one of us would have mentioned if I had forgotten. It is right next to 815 Main Street. I think it's 49 rental apartments that Mr. Scanlon was and is also a principal of. So he's familiar with the town. He'll say a few words after my introduction.
It's two separate projects, but there is a common ownership?
No, it's not common ownership. No, there's a separate LLC.
Separate LLC.
Different people, different...
Different people, yes.
So there's no...
Mr. Scanlon was the sponsor, as they say, you know, who was the applicant, and then with the tax credit deal on that and the other subsidies, they were investors on that project. So it is a separate, single-purpose LLC. It's just that Mr. Scanlon is the principal of the new LLC for this eight-unit project.
So it's a different LLC, different company?
Right.
All right, that's how we're going to approach it?
Right.
Different people.
Yeah, it is separate. They're not depending on each other for anything, other than, we believe, a good his... That, you know, you know that it's a good history of a good and worthy rental project, so there is experience on his part, you know, with this type of a development. So, in a nutshell, I'll just go through the so-called legal requirements, which are three. One, that the applicant has control of the site, and the LLC owns the site, the deed's in the package. That's number one. Number two, that the entity be either a public or a nonprofit, or in this case, a limited dividend entity. And the LLC is a limited liability company, and under the case law and regulations, they are a limited dividend organization, because they cannot go forward until they sign the regulatory agreement that limits the revenue, the profits, or dividends, so-called, that will take place after the comprehensive permit, without being presumptuous about getting it. And then, when they go to construction and a closing, there's that regulatory agreement that's signed with DHCD. And the third requirement is that they be deemed eligible for a public subsidy by a state agency, and that is indeed DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, through the Housing Stabilization Fund, as usual, acronym is HSF, that's for the Housing Stabilization Fund. So there are only eight units, we believe nicely designed. You'll see them shortly. They're in the package, of course, but we'll project them. And seven of the eight are affordable. The affordable will be... Affordables will be rented to households earning up to 80% of the area median income. And I think, the only other thing I wanted to mention, in case somebody else does not, we put in the package letters from various town organizations or boards. This project, although it's not the local initiative program, subsidy program, it is supported by the Select Board. There's a letter in there. It is also supported by the...
So you already been, and you got your eligibility letter from them?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and that's in the package near the beginning, I believe, in the application. There is also support from the Affordable Housing Trust, and the community... That's the second letter. The third letter is from the Community Preservation Committee, which not only supports the project, but they have shown their support by approving $300,000 in the CPC funds, which also, I believe I'm correct, has been approved both by the Selectment and by town meeting, at the last town meeting. So those funds are already committed by the town to this project. So those are really the highlights, the things that I wanted to say. So without further ado, I think next we'll have John. John, you can come up and sit next to me and just say a few words, and then we'll get on with the description of plans.
Counselor, did you... You guys declare safe harbor? Did you... The safe harbor...
Did you declare a safe harbor?
We don't declare safe harbor. If you think there's a safe harbor, that would be for the town to do. We don't believe there is one. And again, the town supports it, so we would hope that you would do it no matter what. But...
I mean, we do have a lot of projects 40B in the works. I think, on our calendar year, we have to make sure we're not in excess of that.
Well, several things, and I'll be totally candid. You know, if there is really a safe harbor already, then you can assert that, and we would have to wait until the duration of a one-year period is up. I'm not aware that there's a safe harbor. Under the case law, it's very clear in the regulations, even if there is a safe harbor, or even if a town is over 10%, for example, never mind the year-to-year safe harbors, you still have the right to...
I understand.
Right. So, you know, I certainly hope you don't have a safe harbor that you want to assert. Now would be the time, candidly, if you want to do it. But we think for a project that has the support of the town, as you said, including money committed, and eight units on a good site that really doesn't create, that we can think of any negative impacts, we would hope that, you know, you'd want to add, as the rest of the town does, the eight units to the subsidized housing inventory.
So you're going to have a... All right, so, let's keep hearing.
Okay. So, John, if you just want to, and I talked about 815 a little bit, but you can just introduce yourself, and then we'll keep going.
Well, thank you for inviting us tonight. It's our pleasure to be making the presentation to you. My name's John Scanlon, by the way, for the record. I'm the developer of the 801 project. I'm also the developer of the 815 project, which is next door. Nanette, who's behind me, manages the 815 project, and she'll be helping out with the management of the 801 project as well. The rest of the project team is Greg Saruni, he's our architect, and we have Rich Tabazinski from Atlantic Design.
Okay.
Okay.
So, then, what we will do first is have Rich Tabazinski go through the site plan and what he's prepared and that we submitted, and I think it's teed up to be on the projector and on the screen for us, as well as anybody on the remote. Oh, by the way, if I may just backtrack one second. I emailed to Ken Buckland today. We noticed after we submitted the package that the DHCD project eligibility letter, which I think I started to mention as to the fundability and eligibility approved by DHCD. We have the project eligibility letter from June, it's in the package, but we had noticed that they had a typo on the second page. They referred to all eight units as being affordable, so they sent me a corrected letter that I got just today, that states it correctly, that there are seven out of the eight units are affordable. So if I may, just submit it to your assistant planner, is that okay, or to one of you up there?
So we haven't got a copy of this?
I emailed it to Ken Buckland today.
Yeah.
But I brought a hard copy, if you would like it.
Hi, so I... There is one, there should be one located in the file, and then I did take it to the clerk's office, so it's stamped in, and it's in the record.
Okay, so then you'll be good, then?
Thank you.
Right. Sorry that I forgot that until now. So, putting up the slides for Rich. You probably need to be with a microphone. I don't know if any of these...
Yeah.
Can you grab one at the end, maybe?
Laman.
It probably moves... I don't know if it's on cord or what, but...
She's also on it.
All right, let's hear it.
Good evening. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers. And I have old-fashioned presentation boards here of the full set of site plans, and then a colored-up version of the site layout plan on the other side of this board. But I just wanted to show you the overall locus of the project, just to familiarize yourself with it. But here's the 815 Main Street project, and as you can see, this is the proposed project right next door. This is Main Street here. Farring Hill Road goes off on the side here, and then there's the railroad tracks that extend behind the both sites to the north. So that's just giving you an orientation of where the project is. And so, the board that I have in front here is the same that's on the screen, and I just wanted to run through a few of the highlights of the development. As Peter had mentioned, it's a three-quarter acre lot that presently has a couple buildings on it that are under renovation. Those are shown in the lighter yellow on the site plan. As you can see, the proposed buildings are in the darker yellow. So the site is fully developed right now. It's basically open, flat topography. A good portion of it is grassed with scattered trees around it. There's existing driveways coming in from Main Street. There's two curb cuts now that are basically there along Main Street that serve the existing dwellings that are there. In addition to that, the property, and in this general area of Wareham, is served by the public water system and private septic systems. We went through the zoning. It's zoned MR30, but there's no overlay districts, there's no flood zones, wetlands, any other environmentally sensitive areas, such as aquifers, or zone twos, or natural heritage, nature species areas. We're kind of free from all of those type of constraints on the site, so it's a good site for development. So as you can see by the site plan, just to orient yourself, on the left-hand side of the property is the access drive that goes into 815 Main Street. And what we have proposed is to utilize that drive for the majority of the parking for the new units. So that'll be the main access for the new buildings and units, which are highlighted in yellow on the site plan. So along that stretch there, there's 14 parking spaces that are proposed, two of which are handicap spaces for the accessible units. And then, in addition to that, there's three other parking spaces shown in back of the existing dwelling units, exactly right in that area there. And then there's a couple gravel spots shown in the brown area, right up off of Main Street, where they'll... So that brings the total of 19 parking spaces. Your bylaw requires two per unit, which would mean 16 is the total that's required. We're providing three extra for, you know, additional parking, or just excess parking. And it's mainly, we've provided the parking to the... Behind the existing units in the gravel parking area there, mainly to serve the units that are in the existing buildings, just in terms of getting a close proximity to those. That's what those parking spaces are mainly going to serve. The ones off of the main driveway, going back to 815, those will serve basically the newer units that are being built along that area. And as you can see, we've proposed sidewalks that provide access to all the buildings from those spaces, and we've also provided handicap spots that will provide access from those to the handicap accessible units that are being proposed. In terms of utilities or other aspects of the site, as I mentioned earlier, it'll be served by a new septic system. There are, there is a septic system out there that serves the two existing buildings, but those will be abandoned and replaced by a new system to serve both the existing buildings and the new buildings. So it's... We've laid it out and designed it according to the Title V and your Board of Health regulations. We've done a perk test on the site that was witnessed by the Board of Health and found just very good sandy soils, two-minute-per-inch rates for perk rates. So the design of the septic system is shown in the back, the right rear corner of the property. We're proposing at this point, you know, leaching field system with the reserve areas in between, and, you know, two-compartment septic tank that would serve, again, all eight units or 16 bedrooms on the site. In terms of drainage, what we've proposed is a catch basin and a leaching pit that was proposed at the very rear corner of the new parking area. That would capture the runoff from the sidewalk, and the new sidewalk and the new pavement, and possibly a portion of the existing drive that, right now, kind of runs along that edge of pavement. So we've shown a catch basin and a six-foot diameter leaching pit. One of the comments we did receive from your peer-review consultant is to provide drainage calculations for that, to confirm. We will... That's something we can easily do and provide to the board if they desire. In addition to that drainage system, we've also proposed a couple of the units to have underground roof drain, leaching pits, dry wells that would handle the roof runoff from a couple of those new units. We were trying to keep that dry well system as far away as possible from the units and from the septic systems, just because I believe these units will have basements, as far as I know. So we don't want to have our roof drain dry wells too close to those buildings. So for that reason, we only showed that on the north side, and on the northern building, and then on a southern building. The central building, due to its, you know, the close proximity to the other units and the septic system, we felt that that one would just have roof drain downspouts coming out the splash pads, and that would... That runoff would either infiltrate into the surrounding grass, or perhaps be caught by the catch basin in front. Other utility systems on the site is basically just a water line. We had proposed a new water line coming in along the western property line that would have services to the new units from that water line. The other units that are existing have water services already, and we weren't proposing any changes to those. So the water line would tie into the eight-inch main on the other side of the street. Other utilities, I believe, the electric that serves the existing units is overhead, and it exists right now for the new units. I believe we were proposing to have those just be served as underground, that would run off of the service that comes in for the 815 Main Street site. So that is kind of in a nutshell, the proposed presentation in terms of the site plan and the site layout. Peter, I don't know if you wanted us to get into the exceptions at this point, or leave it open for questions?
Before we go forward, that parking, is this part of the big project on the left?
There will be an easement, because that's why we mentioned the control that Mr. Scanlon is involved with that. So it doesn't affect the spaces or the use of the abutting property, but there'll be spaces, excuse me, virtue of an easement from the other property to 801.
Okay, but if there's a comprehensive permit for the other project, it has to be modified if you want to give a chunk from it, or easement. So there's some rules set for the 48 units?
I mean, that could be done. It seems to be so insignificant in terms of the use of the other property, but, you know, technically, I hear you. So, you know, if that is necessary... Pardon my voice, I don't know why it's catching right now. We can certainly, you know, do that request for, I would call it, an insubstantial modification. I don't think it should hold anything up.
And if it's not substantial modification for 815, you mean?
Right.
You have to come to the zoning board to see if it's not...
Right, that's what I mean. That's the process, come to you for a request to approve that as a change, which I think, you know, seems to be insubstantial.
Now, if a project like this, that's my opinion, can support its own parking lot, don't you think it's... Its own parking, don't you think it's not feasible?
No, there's shade parking in many, many instances. It's happened in many of the projects that I've been involved in.
All right. You want to continue arguing before we start with the board member on it? You want to keep adding some things?
Sure, just a few more things and a couple of things before Greg goes through the building plans. But I wanted to mention, as Rich did, Charlie Rowley did send in a letter today, and appreciate him doing it so quickly, because he hadn't received things, apparently. A lot of the comments, I believe that Rich can take care of, and will have to be, you know, post tonight's hearing. But one thing that Mr. Rowley mentioned was whether it's been reviewed by the fire department, and in fact, plans in terms of their review and being comfortable with it for their access and all. It has been reviewed. I just checked with Nanette Perkins. She expected to get an email from, I believe it's Captain Rogers in the fire department who reviews the plans, confirming that he's A-OK with it. We don't have that yet, but certainly we'll get that to you before the next hearing.
Okay.
And then, if you're going to hold off on questions for Mr. Tabazinski, then if we can tee up the building plans and have Greg Saruni go through those.
All right. I want to start with board members. Richard, what do you think of that?
I don't have any questions at this time, but I was just wondering what we had for a note from Guy Campina on the nitrogen reduction system?
Good point.
On the sewer? Now, this is a private septic that has not...
No, but Guy didn't make a comment. It says here that he recommends that there's a nitrogen reduction system included in this because of the new watershed and the DEP.
Right. If...
So I'm just...
You are within 500 feet of wetland, right?
I'll have to ask Rich, but...
Are you?
We were...
So you might have to use a D-Nite system?
Honestly, I don't believe so. Yeah, I don't believe there's wetlands within 500 feet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but the regulations that were in effect when we applied didn't have that. I don't know that we'd be subject to them anyway, but as a legal matter, if they weren't in effect when we applied, we're not subject to them. But our understanding is that we comply with all of the Board of Health regulations, right?
I'm just reading here. It says this letter was submitted on 8/8/22, and it says, "With the new watershed agenda..." This is from Guy Campina. "With the new watershed agenda from DEP that will address the nitrogen loading, some sort of nitrogen reduction system would seem appropriate."
Okay, we, you know, I had asked for things, but it's okay. I didn't get those letters, so if there are any other letters...
I understand, but regardless, the town has some orders in place. If you are within 500 feet of wetland, you must use a D-Nite system.
Oh, sure, no, I'm not...
One of those fast systems.
And I appreciate being told about it, it's just that, you know, we don't know for sure at this point, because we didn't get that letter.
Right.
We'll certainly, you know, if we have to comply, we have to comply. If it's a local thing, and it's more technical than substantive, we can ask for a waiver. I'm not saying that we will, I'm just saying...
Also, even if it's not within 500 feet, the board might impose this, because planning board one time, a couple of times imposed in subdivision, they are well over 1,000 feet, and they impose for them a D-Nite system, which helps a lot in the nitrogen loading on groundwater.
Sure, no, I'm certainly very...
That's a hurdle we have to pass.
I understand.
Okay.
You know, we'll look into that and try to, you know, tell you what we think and support what we think. So appreciate that heads up. But if, I don't know, if you would... Were there any other letters, other than Mr. Rowley's, which I do have, and then the...
Counselor, let me keep running, let me keep running with my board members' question, then we'll get to that. Jimmy, what do you think?
Well, it seems, the same question you had, it seems... We got two different ownerships here, they're supposed to be... So they're two different entities, but it seems apparent to me that it's really just an extension of an existing, you're going to have the same management, all their parking is on somebody else's property, their stormwater drainage is on somebody else's property. So I'd really like to see that there's a interperpetuity, an easement, or easements that, you know, these properties get sold separately, and the Hatfields and the McCoys get arguing, you've got no parking, and you've got no drainage. So I'm concerned about that. So, I'm concerned about that and, you know, yeah, okay, so it's two different owners. It's one, it looks to me like one big project. I'm just, it's walking across the room and it's going quack, quack, quack. And maybe it is a goose, but it sure does look like a duck to me.
No, I respect that. I can give you, you know, the reasons why and do a memo on it and explain further. There's no question, and I was probably remiss not to point out right in the application, never mind my introduction, that, of course, we'll have a cross-easement in perpetuity. There's no question about it. That is necessary. We agree 100%. In terms of the separateness of the project, as I said, it is totally legit under 40B law and frankly, other law for it to still be separate projects. So, you know, that's...
Now, what happened if you come back to this board and the board figure, determine that there's substantial changes and you have to come back for a regular public hearing for, to give the easement and say the board say no, then what you do?
We'd have to deal with it at that time, you know?
Okay.
If, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue that case now if you...
I mean, I know the legality of it. It's a separate people, separate company, and I believe that has to do with that $300,000 grant. I mean, you cannot probably, maybe, that grant from the town to be a separate entity. That's fine, good for them. But the way I look at it, it's a little complicated. If there wasn't a 40B project in the site and somebody would grant you an easement or sell you a chunk of it, I understand, but you're using their entrance, maybe when the project was approved, did you do that? You didn't do that. There was Donovan, the 815. You did the 815 or attorney Donovan?
No, I did that.
You did that? So, probably the studies of the traffic for the entrance was just enough for the 48 units. Is it 48 in the back? 49. Now, you impact and add an 18 unit, so it's, it kind of disturbed the other projects. So, it's complicated. They, like, junction together. You're probably going to have, I don't know, that's my opinion, if you treat it as one project, bigger, it's going to have some more studies. That's my opinion. I want to refer to Mr. Rowley, see what he thinks on this matter, but that's how, the way I look at it. I want to go to Mr. Larson. Troy?
I agree with everything that all of you have said so far. I mean, it just seems like the same, the same units and the same components. Seems like a lot.
Charlie, what do you think? My theory, of my theory?
I have to plead ignorance on this particular matter because I've never read the special permit that was issued for the previous project. The density does not seem to suggest that there would be significant issues with the additional 14 spaces, especially since they don't really impact anything except what you see directly next to Main Street. If the 14 spaces were in, where you had a lot more conflict for passing back and forth from the inner portions of the project, it might have an impact. But I don't see that traffic necessarily being an issue with this.
I'm saying it's one of the issues impacting the other comprehensive permit. The other, the 815, I mean, 815 was designed in a way, the way it's designed. Now, you come back to it and say, "I want to take a piece of the parking lot or add this." Just like, for instance, let's talk about something recent. Just like the Settlers Glen or Cove, what's the name, the 150 units? Mr. Freeman did that.
Woodland Cove.
Woodland Cove. Say, right now, there's another project going next to it and they want to share the entrance and stuff. I would think that'd be a big problem, wouldn't it?
Well, in that particular case, it could because of the magnitude of the existing project. But again, I haven't had the opportunity to read the terms of the special permit under that other 40B proposal, so I don't know any about it.
Right, but that's a 50-unit project. This isn't 10 units.
I understand that.
That's good magnitude as well.
All I'm saying is that it is a very quick glance. Adding 14 parking spaces to the front of that project doesn't seem to me to be an existing or a significant issue for the traffic that will go back and forth there. I mean, they have not narrowed up the driveway. It's the same driveway width that is under the current site of the abutting property, so that hasn't changed. But to say anything more than that, I would prefer to read what the permit says to see what they had for concerns, whether or not there was a traffic study and whether or not there was a limitation on the number of spaces that were allowed on the site. That would make a difference on what I might suggest to you.
Well, the number of spaces is not going to matter because they're not taking from the spaces, they're creating new spaces.
They're adding new spaces.
I agree.
They're adding new spaces that utilize that existing driveway for access. And all I'm saying, under a very cursory look at it, is that adding those 14 spaces, to me, does not significantly adversely impact that existing driveway to handle the current traffic.
Now, between parking spaces, what's our bylaw say? 24 feet you have minimum between?
24 feet is a driving aisle for anything that's 90-degree parking, which this is.
So, that is the 24 there, you think?
I believe, yes, I believe it is. I looked at it quickly and I could check that for you just by scale, but...
No, it looks like, it looks like, but the town bylaw is 24, right?
It would be 24 for right-angle parking, yes.
All right. If I may, Counselor, Madam Selectman, we have a selectman. Yes, Madam, you want to come forward, please? Maybe you have some input from the selectman and tell us...
Selectmen have kind of blessed it.
Yeah, I know, but I'd like to hear it from the selectmen themselves. If you state your name for the record, please, Madam.
My name is Patricia Wertz. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen of Wareham. I remember this plan coming in front of us and us approving the concept of it, where it is, the way the current buildings were going to be utilized and the building around it. We did not spend any time understanding that those parking sites were actually going to be...
Right, but this is for us to do. But, I mean, you guys really liked the project, I mean, the area, everything, you guys blessed that?
Yeah, we did. And I actually went up and looked at 815 before that, and I think it flows together well. I think it has a reasonable look for the area within the town. Yeah, so, and as a boarded whole, I think all of us felt that way.
Okay, so that's a good thing. All right, anything you want to add? No?
No, I'm just learning more about what you do here as, so, I learned, under those circumstances, to keep my mouth shut, that doesn't always happen.
No, thank you, Madam, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just put my scale on the plan. It may be just the way that it's printed. It scales between 23 and 24 feet. The standard would be 24.
All right. All right, back to you, Counselor. Let's hear some more.
Okay, thank you. So, if the slides of the building, and then Greg, you can perhaps...
I don't think she has a slide.
Oh, I thought that you were able to do that, you have the board...
I have a slide.
Oh, okay, I thought that you took care of that at the start.
Now, while he's preparing this, how, what's the median income right now? So, do you have seven affordable for below median income? 80%?
Yes, the households that will be eligible will be earning up to 80% of area median income.
Okay. Sir, your name, if you want to speak? For the record, name and address and who you present.
For the record, I'm Greg Srinian, I'm President of Rosecombe Architecture.
Okay.
Architect. What you have in front of you here is the renovated existing barn that is on the property that's proposed to have two one-bedroom units centrally facing the main road is this elevation, which, you know, we're trying to keep the historical nature of what's there. We are adding dormers on either end to give us more headroom on the second floor, but we're trying to keep the barn doors, some of the detail that is there and the window patterns. The rest of it, everything will be shingled and wood trim similar to what's out there now and trying to keep the detail to be the same. Again, that would be the rear elevation that you wouldn't see from the street, but there is an exterior set of stairs for the second means of egress from the second-floor unit. Units would be stacked, one on top of each other. Those, the elevations drawn, you know, as straight-horn.
That's the second one? That's existing?
No, that's this rendering.
Okay.
Those are just the four elevations. So, you do have, okay. Again, first floor, one-bedroom, pre-open plan.
How many square feet are the one-bedroom? Okay.
That's the first floor. Second floor is 730.
730, including bathrooms and closets?
Yes, that's the total footprint.
So, you might, you might need a waiver on that because we only allow 650 living with our closets and bathrooms. So, you have to figure out the willing, the living space. If it's under 650, you might need a waiver on that. You got to exclude stairs, closets, and bathrooms. If you come up...
I don't think we're under 650, but I don't see that in the zoning bylaw.
The zoning bylaw is 650 excluding closets where stairs and bathrooms.
You're saying that you can't have less than that?
Not in Wareham, no. No apartment or up-dwelling, anything should be built if it has less than 650 square feet excluding closets, hallway, stairs, and bathrooms.
I can't probably look and add anything.
Right, well, that, for next hearing, you have to come up with the number.
650 net living area.
Okay, yeah, I'll check that. These are the buildings that Rich had showed you, which would be the three buildings on the side. They consist of two of this style, which is basically one unit on this side and another unit on that side. And then, in the middle of the two buildings was the single-story handicap unit. Again, kind of very historic, you look in exteriors.
Okay.
Similar detailing. The square footage of those, I don't see an issue. I think they're well over.
Are you, are you really building a chimney in it like that or just for looks?
This was a prototype. I don't think they'll have a chimney.
Okay, what's that?
A pantry.
Okay, so there's no chimney?
Chimney.
All right. So, just to let you know, if we are to approve permits like this and you show a chimney, you'll have to build it. So, if the board approves these plans, it has to be built as presented. Okay, so if you don't want a chimney, you got to take it out with next time. And you got to specify siding, shingles, all this stuff. Whatever's specified, that's got to be built. You can't change it midways unless you come back for a major public hearing. All right, keep going, sir, sorry.
Just one thing on that. I know that you said it was going to be shingled and then wood trim. I believe this is the old York House. When I was going by and they were redoing the front of the building, I did see PVC trim going up, so I was just wondering if that's going to be a part of it. I mean, you're just saying wood trim, but I also saw...
PVC, but it would be painted.
Okay, but I was under the...
Starports are allowing the PVC as long as it's painted.
Okay, but I just heard you say that it would have wood trim, so when I went by there, I did see PVC being put on, so I just want to make it clear on that.
We'll provide specifications if those are required.
Okay. I mean, if you want to do vinyl siding, you can. You just have to specify on the specs you're doing. We have no problem with that.
And I don't know if you can see the existing building that's on the property.
That's existing?
Existing, that's the house that has three bedrooms, I believe, John? Has three bedrooms in it?
Okay.
And that, they're just doing some updating.
Okay, you're renovating this right now?
We got to finish with all cosmetic painting, artwork.
Okay, how many units going to be in that one? This one going to stay one unit?
One unit.
Three-bedroom or something? Okay.
That's the, that's the market rate unit. Is that the one that has a bunch of gingerbread on it, on the, yep.
Okay.
Have any answer questions?
Well, right now, no. Right now, I guess, I want to go quick to the public. Is there anyone who want to speak in favor of this project? Favor? I hear none. Against? I hear none. All right. So, we got to have to have a plan here. Where you, the first most important thing, I don't think safe harbor is necessary because eight units, I know for a fact for the, in the last year, we didn't approve a project that would put the town above the safe harbor because that Woodland Cove was approved two years ago, right? Was it? Like, three years ago, wouldn't, that big one you did, the Counselor?
It's got to be two years now, yeah.
And we haven't done some big like this before, so we're going to pass the safe harbor. I guess the biggest challenge is we have to visit 815 Main Street and see, is there a possible way you could carve a piece and sell it?
We'll look at it. I, as I say, I feel remiss that I didn't identify that for you. I don't, I don't think it's something that's...
I'm not saying it's impossible, what you're proposing, but it has to be visited.
But in terms of carving something off, we can look at all possibilities. Frankly, I think it's less onerous and easier just to accomplish as well as impact to just do it as an easement, which, as I say, there are many examples in my experience. So, we will come up with a plan that shows an easement. We'll go through the existing comprehensive permit for that other project, and it may be possible to, while this hearing is open, for me to very quickly knock out a request for a change on the other one. And, you know, you don't necessarily have to schedule hearings or meetings the same night, but I would presumably, just as a heads up, as I said, I would think that there's a good chance that it is legitimately an insubstantial change. I'm not asking you to pass judgment now, but I would do it under that process where you know you have to have a meeting within 20 days. So, perhaps it would make sense to do it simultaneously with, whenever the next hearing is on this.
Let me ask you something. Why wouldn't you put the building where the leaching field is and put the leaching field this way? Why wouldn't you do it the other way, away from the parking? It'd be set in the back. You don't want to be close to the railroad or something?
You can come up and sit at the table and you want to put the board back up again.
The three-bedroom house has to stay where it is because it's existing.
Apparently, right. But the, all the proposed units, why wouldn't you put them in the back or to the right? You know what I'm saying? The three yellow buildings, why wouldn't you put them, two in the back and one to the right of the property and put the leaching field in the front?
Just, basically, just to be in proximity to the parking areas.
Be in proximity to the parking areas.
They have to buy less asphalt.
Not necessarily. Wouldn't you think the aesthetics of...
The parking area is where it is, but we could put the, we felt the buildings would be situated along the, where it's closest to the parking area.
I mean, wouldn't you think the aesthetics of the project, the look of it? I'm a developer myself. If it were me, I would put those buildings to the back or to the right versus the leaching field there and be away from the parking and the noise and the traffic. Why wouldn't I do that? Why would I, why would all the three buildings, when I hear every car starts on a parking lot, if they sat in the back, less noise? Wouldn't you agree?
They're not going to end up with a big backyard. They're not going to end up, they're going to end up putting the parking on their own property. They're going to end up with less open space.
No, no, let's, let's assume the parking stay what it is and you get the easement and you put your buildings over there where the leaching field is. Wouldn't you agree you have a nice front yard?
I think what we're endeavoring to do is to keep the units away from the neighbors so there would be more...
Isn't your neighbor the railroad?
No, there's a neighbor in between.
There's another, another single-family residence.
After the ride?
Yeah. There is.
How about the back? Is there somebody behind you? That's 815 in the back.
That's 801R, it's a lot that was cut off before I owned it, but...
Is that the solar field behind it or is it...
Oh, no, solar's on the other side of the railroad tracks.
All right, who's that parcel behind you? Lot 1012A.
Do you own this property?
You are, ma'am?
Hi, I'm a...
Want to come forward to the mic?
Yes, hi.
Name and address first. Take your time.
I'm Nanette Perkins and I actually live in Sandwich, but I work on this project. The property, as we're looking... The property, as we're looking at this to the top, is owned. It was bought within the last few years by the next-door neighbor.
The one on the right owns the one on the back.
Right. The neighbor to the south owns the space.
And, and the reason you put on those buildings away, to accommodate the neighbor?
Yes.
Kinda.
Absolutely, and to give people a kind of a backyard and-
Well, that's my opinion anyway. I wouldn't wanna be living five feet of a, or sixteen feet of a parking space, but I guess it is not even. What is it, like, eight feet from parking space? You hear every car starts. I guess it is what it is. What are you for the project, ma'am? You, you the, wanna developer, or?
I'm, I'm the coordinator.
Coordinator? Okay. All right. So we need to do, what's the plan? Fifty-three G account's been opened?
I believe so. I believe-
There has? Okay. What's, okay, I guess if everybody puts some, have some input on the plan, I guess the first, first thing we have to address, 815 and check that special permit, that 40B permit for there. We're gonna check on the septic system. I believe you have wetland on this side. See what the driveway is. Isn't that the clubhouse when you enter to the left on the 815?
Clubhouse is on the left, and I think there's wetlands behind that. That's, if it's down there, it's over, it's about 500 feet or plus on that side.
Now, on the left, were there like a river or something?
Yeah.
This is one entrance, and then there's another entrance about there down.
Oh, you are in this side?
Right.
This side, I guess.
Wetlands on the backside.
Okay, all right. I, I, have you seen, did you go to Board of Health yet? Have you checked with the, did you run this plan by the Board of Health?
Rich, I don't know if you have, but they-
No? Okay. The Board of Health will, will determine if it needs a D-Nite system or not. And like I said, even if the Board of Health don't require a D-Nite system, they have a certain formula, how far from wetland, radius, things like this. It's not an aquifer area, and usually it's not required if you are more than 500 feet, but for, because it's dense, we might require that. Because it's a dense project, three-quarter acres. You put on how many bedrooms total?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, 110 gallon. So looking 1800 gallon with a, with a safety, another 110 for each. You're looking at about 2,800 gallon a day, so on that small area. So we might be looking, we might ask for a D-Nite system. It's not much more. It is expensive, but not too much when you spread it over eight units. So, you know what I'm saying?
And the City Commissioner has recommended it.
It's not really his jurisdiction, but we appreciate his recommendation. So it is Board of Health's issue, and then for us to decide if we go with D-Nite system. I guarantee you, the Board of Health's gonna recommend the D-Nite system for that small area. Sixteen bedrooms total, you said?
Yes.
Sixteen? If I could see where my thing is. Sixteen. Yeah, you need 1,760 gallons plus another sixteen times on ten. Because the Board of Health asks for an additional bedroom for each. So the two-bedroom, he'll make you do a three-bedroom.
Of course, don't, in terms of the additional gallonage, don't forget, albeit it was just one house, but there have been three bedrooms there that are already part of the septic flow, so it's a little slight, it's slightly less of an additional flow that's-
Well, but they're all gonna go in that field, right?
I understand.
Right. So the two-bedroom, the three-bedroom unit, it requires 330, the Board of Health will require 440. The two-bedroom will be 220, the Board of Health's gonna make you 330, and so on, so on. So, so you'll be looking at about 2,500 gallon discharge, so most likely it'll be a D-Nite system. But then again, let's, let's see what the Board of Health say. So we're gonna hear from the Board of Health, the Water Department, have you heard from them? Have you talked to them? Counselor?
Water Department does have a, they do have something in here, but-
Yeah.
What kinda tab they want? Eight-inch, six-inch?
I'll have to turn to Rich for that, but I believe that discussion took place.
Yeah? All right. Well, I mean, they're, they're pretty good to work with, that's a little different than answer. So we're gonna discuss 815, the Board of Health, what else in mind?
I think, you know, we need to wait to let them go find out what's happening next door and make sure we don't have to make any, we gonna make a decision on that, or at least review it before-
Are you, are, are you set on the location of the building? No way you could put them in the back? You really, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I, I think, you know, between now and the next hearing, we'll review all of that, 'cause I understand the discussions and different thoughts. As to 815, I think the most straightforward way to deal with it is for me to review it, and if I think it's appropriate, and of course necessary, to send in a notice of project change, then we will do that forthwith. And certainly with your discretion, you know, you can schedule it separately, do, do back-to-back. You know, that would not be a hearing, that would be a meeting, unless you decide that it's a substantial change.
All right.
But, you know, that, that way you would get my input, and you could review with Planner or anybody you want to as to, you know, whether you think I'm right on the legal aspect.
Which agency gonna be running those? Wareham or South Shore?
Sorry?
Which housing gonna be doing it?
Um, sorry.
Yeah.
Because we would be working with DHCD, and they would be using their regional as South Shore Housing. And Wareham, hopefully, they're working on a contract with HUD, but, but it's been a long time in the making.
So pretty much South Shore?
Yeah.
All right.
I wanted to work with Wareham, but-
They pay less money, you're better off with South Shore.
No, that's not, oh, well, that's not why, but, okay, thanks for the tip.
Jimmy, what do you wanna say?
I'm just, I'm thinking about that easement. I don't know if it's a question or a comment, or, but on the easement, you're gonna get an easement for 15 parking spaces. Does that easement, or is the language of the easement gonna protect that driveway, that entrance somehow? In other words, is it gonna extend into the whole driveway, or is it just gonna be the 15 parking spaces?
Right, the access easement would be for only as to the driveway, to use the existing driveway, and it can be laid out on a sketch plan that will be part of the easement, only the part that's necessary to get to the parking. And it would also have the typical language, but, you know, not exclusive use and not to interfere with the current use of the 815 premises and things like that.
But it's gonna have the right to pass and repass on that driveway.
Yes.
So they could never, they could never just decide they're gonna have one entrance at the other end, eliminate this entrance, and then those 15 cars don't have a way in and out? That's my question.
Oh, for sure. I mean, it would become binding on 815 owners so that they couldn't do that.
All right. Charlie, wanna send them some homework to do?
Yeah, the, the main one I've got as a question is, the plans are stamped as preliminary, and there's some missing information there, even if you would've considered this plan as complete in terms of a site plan. So I guess my question is, is there more information yet to come? For example, the septic plan, which is on the second sheet, has no elevations associated with it. And there are some things that are missing on the plan itself in terms of completing the details that are shown. So my question to the engineer was, can I anticipate a revised plan that does something different in addition to filling in the blanks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, again, we just got it, but again, it wasn't lengthy, and it's much appreciated. And Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you said that you, you will contact Mr. Rowley, and you do believe that you can accommodate all those requests?
All right, let me, let me-
We weren't planning on-
Sir, let me say something before we go forward. Stormwater management also, that something has to be visited on 815, because you're gonna be, it's gonna impact the drainage on that existing driveway. So whatever stormwater management was designed back for the 815, now that you're gonna add, you'd engineer on the project, right?
No, I wasn't, but we're not affecting that design at all.
Adding 14 parking spaces, you're gonna impact-
They're being pitched, they're being pitched away from that existing drive into their own separate catch basin, so the drive, they're not, those, those aren't going into the existing drainage system of 815 at all.
Other than the fact that it's on, the drain is on 815's property.
If I can, if I can interject here, I think-
One other time, please.
The drainage-
Okay.
The drainage that is proposed will intercept some of the driveway runoff from the 815 project and go into the single catch basin that has a leaching pit attached to it. But I have no stormwater calculations to tell me how much runoff that leaching pit is taking, whether the capacity is enough, and whether it meets stormwater regulations. So we need that information.
We definitely need roof runoffs, parking runoffs, all that, so we're gonna need that well, stormwater management report. Okay, sir.
Yeah, I mean, and to answer Mr. Rowley's question, we, we can make the improvements and add additions to the plan that he requested in terms of, you know, spot elevations and drainage calcs and a little more detail to the plans. You know, to be honest, I wasn't planning on doing a final, complete septic system design at this stage of the project. That would be for the later stages when we go to the Board of Health. So I think that would be the only part of the plan that might still be, I guess, incomplete.
Right, but I, I would, I would, I would disagree with this. I would think that's the first thing you gotta do, a perk test and do the calculation-
We've already done that.
And go to Board of Health, see how big of a leaching field-
We've already done that.
Okay, so, and the-
It's just the details of what, what's the slope of the pipe, and the inverts of the pipe, and the inverts of the septic tank is what's missing on these plans.
Is this the exact square footage of your leaching field?
Yes.
So that's, that's designed by engineer? That's the size you need for so many bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay. And-
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question with respect to that and the comment you had about adding an additional bedroom? If memory serves me correctly, for the Board of Health, they do require that for a single-family home, up to four bedrooms, I think it is. After that, they don't require any additional, because the assumption is nobody's gonna add five or six bedrooms, so they don't need it. In this particular case, it being a 40B project, if additional bedrooms are added, wouldn't the project have to come back here as well, not just go to the Board of Health?
Well-
So my question is, why have the added bedrooms?
I mean, you have this three ba-
Wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, let me give you an example. The big house, three-bedroom. And that's a pretty big house. See that, say, say they close couple of, couple of rooms and add bedrooms. I believe the regulation for each dwelling, the Board of Health's gonna make them add a bedroom, 40B or not.
Well, that, my only question was, it's gonna trigger a, I would think, a review of your board in order to approve that, because you're setting this up as a, as a total number of bedrooms within each of these buildings. That would affect the leaching area. If you added bedrooms, it would add it. So maybe they would want to discuss that with the Board of Health as to what their requirement would be?
Right.
So that you can set it as a part of your special permit.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's why they have to get a, discuss with the Board of Health, the number of bedrooms, the leaching field, the D-Nite system, if it's required. That's very important that we do that.
We'll definitely do that, but I just, my two cents worth is I do agree with Mr. Rowley that we couldn't do that, adding bedrooms, as one might on a single-family house that's not otherwise regulated by a permit such as a comprehensive permit. So we would have to come back, so there's really no danger that speaks to the issue that the Board of Health, you know, has and the reason they add bedrooms. But, but again, we'll talk-
I mean, this is up to them. If they say that's what your theory and his theory is, fine with me. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I hear you.
All right, so, and definitely we're gonna see, next time, we're gonna see not a, it's gonna be definite, definitive plan, not a preliminary plan. So you're gonna come up with final plan. I recommend that you engineer, contact Mr. Rowley, and work it together, and come back with a definite, definitive, definitive plan, not preliminary plans. Because we cannot approve a preliminary plan.
Well, I don't disagree with the concept. I mean, there's some legal term of art as to definitive, and we, you know, the, I, I wouldn't necessarily agree that we need a definitive plan as that's defined in the statute, because it specifically says in the regulations, we don't need to. But the point is well-taken by Mr. Rowley and you. We wanna provide enough detail to satisfy your peer reviewer. I take no exception with that, and I've worked with Mr. Rowley, as you know, on other projects. And, you know, so we'll do that. And I'll just leave that. I'll monitor it, but I'll leave it to Rich Tabazinski and Charlie to get together.
All right. Why don't we jump to the waivers you asking for? Which, which section? This, four, five?
It is after the preliminary-
Right in the beginning, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's near the beginning, after the narrative pages.
Three, section three. Okay, can we discuss these waivers?
Sure.
All right, let's hear it.
I mean, I, I can go through them, and if, if there's any explanation needed from a technical viewpoint, then Rich can jump in. But as I said at the outset, they're, they're pretty straightforward. The use regulation relates to the multiple principal uses, and, you know, normally it needs a special permit, and we don't need that, 'cause it's a comprehensive permit. Article six, related to density, is same thing in terms of one lot having no more than one building. Then as to the dimensional things, there are a few. We, we comply with a lot of them, but the minimum front setback of 20 feet and the side setback of 10 feet.
If I may, Counselor, just-
Sure.
Any board member on these waivers, if you wanna interrupt, discuss, let's, it's the time to interrupt and discuss.
Good.
All right, sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
Sure. So we are, I think, slightly less. Rich can give the details on what the exact front and side and rear setbacks will be. The next section is 820, about multiple family and apartment dwellings, which have certain details, which, you know, we're just asking that we be approved as to what the plans show. And then the parking things, really just adds to the width and perhaps the length. I think the pla, the spaces that are shown are nine feet by 18 feet. Landscaping, there's not much other than a certain buffer zone, waive the requirement of a 40-foot buffer between residential development and a collector's street. And special permit, although we really, under the regulations, don't need relief from special permit requirements, but we included them to show you the type of things that typically, you know, you would review, which would be review for projects with over five residential units. And as we say right here, what I just said a second ago, under Chapter 40B regulations, you don't need relief from special permit, but we just pointed it out there. And the same is true of the site plan review. Really, your review in its totality constitutes a site plan review, so we don't need to go for a separate site plan review approval. And then the two on the last page are just, we're asking for permission, obviously subject to the technical requirements, that you allow us to hook up to the water, the municipal water. Again, agreeing that we, of course, will apply with the technical requirements of the Water Department. And the only other one is, is very minor, just typically towns have street opening kinds of permits work in the public way. And that's usually granted routinely by the selectmen when the project goes forward with construction. But I do ask for it because it, it does seem pretty innocuous, and the intent is that the comprehensive permit be a master permit that, you know, obviates the need to go for other permits. So, you know, that's much more of a technical thing. So in totality, there really aren't, you know, major waivers. Again, we know that you brought up the Board of Health question, we'll have to look into that.
The size.
I'm sorry?
The size of the unit.
And the size, yeah, I did make note of that, yes.
Okay, so, let me ask you something. Are you asking to waive the Water Department fees?
No, no, well, I'm sorry, I did mention fees. I always do put in a request to waive fees, yes, that's correct. We did ask to waive fees and that's totally within your discretion. In this case, seven out of the eight are affordable units. And so I always put in the request and, you know, as you know, candid, some towns, some zoning boards are fine doing that, at least for affordable units, and some aren't, and that's totally your discretion.
Wheream, wheream Water Department fees are very reasonable. I personally do not like to waive. I'm not a favor of waiving the fees or the tapping fee nor a building permit fees. I don't know the rest of the board if they would like to waive, that's fine with me. Now, on the parking space dimension, nine by 18, that's a little tight. Have you seen it some done, Charlie? This is a lot, like four more of compact cars.
Yeah, we've had this discussion with the Planning Board and a couple of issues. But I looked at the plan itself and it shows the parking spaces on the opposite side of that driveway where the 14 new spaces will be, and they are nine by 18. So these new spaces would match the ones that are already there. I wouldn't recommend they be less than nine and a half by 18, that is, by 19, that is the standard. However, when I looked at it and saw that the existing ones are nine by 18.
Right, but that's another reason why we should visit 815 Main Street. Maybe when they put those parking, they said compact cars for the, on the front and larger parking in the back, that's another reason why we should visit that.
I did, I did think about it. I did mention that they were, I believe, in my comments, but I didn't make any recommendation to stick by that nine and a half by 19 standard. Although I think there is certainly room that you could do that. Because of my plan, I had questions about the two gravel parking spaces and there are 17 spaces or 19 spaces altogether and for the number of units, you only need 16. So you've got some space where you could spread those out to get the added room. A half a foot over 14 spaces is seven feet, which you have room enough to accommodate in there.
If you drop one space, you can go to the nine and a half width.
You could. In addition to that, the two handicap spaces are only eight feet wide on either side of a common striped area for the hash pot, right. So there's two extra feet there. So they could get that and there's enough depth not to encroach into the driveway to get the added foot of depth for the parking spaces, so it could be done.
Are you mandated to do a handicap unit?
I'm sorry?
Are you mandated to do a handicap unit?
For the units?
For rental, yes. I don't know if it's one or two.
Is that right?
I did see, I did see one of the sheets in here that says recommended to get a ADA, a wheelchair to be able to go around. I know it's handwritten.
Two of the units actually are going to be handicap accessible.
You just have to excuse me.
And with the spaces, we have the side access, some of the vans, the wheelchairs come in from the side.
You just have to excuse me, I'm trying to eat up all this and it's an awful lot, all in one shot to be able to vote on this, so.
Sure.
All right. So I guess the board gotta think, other than the legality part of it, the waiver of the parking, setbacks, buffer, and fees, the other stuff is more like legal stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one concern about waiving the curb cut permit that would have to be obtained from Municipal Maintenance for any work that's done in Main Street. There may be some minor things. One of my recommendations was that the driveway that goes in by the existing building be modified somewhat because the only way you're gonna get a septic truck in there is to widen that driveway. Right now, it's too close. And when the schematics of the buildings were put up, I could not see where that second-floor stairway came down and I think it's gonna encroach into the existing driveway. So it looks like there's gonna have to be some adjustment there, so.
So for the existing driveway for these two houses, or the house and the barn?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
So I'm just asking that the curb cut permit for whatever requirements for reconstruction in the public way should be worked out through Municipal Maintenance.
So that's something you have to add. So that, so what Mr. Rowley's saying, I guess, I get from him, that's gonna be pretty much a legal access because most likely you're gonna use a sewer truck that goes there. So it's gonna have the proper curb, cut, the proper width, pretty much?
He's gonna have to stop in Main Street and back into the site in order to get back there to do the work because there will be no place for him to turn around.
All right. Also, Counselor, you have to talk, your developer has to talk with the Fire Department?
Yes, as I say, we have, we should be getting that email.
Okay.
Captain Rogers, yeah.
Didn't you not receive something from the Fire Department saying that they didn't have any questions at that time about this? It's in one of our emails.
It was prior, a couple of weeks ago.
Chris Smith said he didn't have any.
But we haven't got it in writing yet, it'll come in.
No, just a letter from him.
Just an email, yeah.
He said on the email a while ago, I recall that he has no plans to look at or something. So I guess now he has them.
There's another email that came in.
Why don't you stay there?
I'm sorry, I'm like a little jumping bean. And he did review them, I was with him when he reviewed them, and he said he had no issues. I talked with him today, he said he had sent a letter to the Planning Board and that he would follow that up today with an email and he was gonna copy me on the email, but by the time I looked up, it was after 5:00 and.
You know, he sent it to the wrong board, if that's the case.
The zoning board or at war, they'll still hijack the letter. We don't get along. We were threatening them with brass knuckles and firebombs last meeting, so, you know, you better get another letter.
They had a fire extinguisher ready for you, Jim.
And they told me where they were gonna put it, too.
They had it right there in front waiting for you.
I know, why did they have it on the Planning Board here?
We'll get it.
They just made a mistake, they sent it to the, instead of sending it to us, they sent it to the Planning Board. And then the Assistant Town Planner said, I don't know what to do with this issue.
So anyway, let's go back to the subject. So, so the board has to think about these waivers properly. The applicant has to go. Board of Health, 815 Main Street, curb cut on the existing.
They're gonna come back, but I recommend that we skip a meeting because you're not gonna be here for the next meeting.
I could come, I could, I could skip. That's good enough. If there's a, well, you need a quorum. Legally, the quorum, three people for 40B is all fine?
Yes, yes.
You don't quorum for 40B?
Yes, but.
But our regulation to have a quorum to open a public hearing, we need four. That's the thing. And for 40B, it might be three, but.
Yeah, well, no, but I mean, an ongoing quorum, but we would probably want four people there just for continuity. But also time-wise, if your next meeting is August 24th, I did check with.
Right, but I believe next meeting, you will have five board member. I could skip, I could read the minutes, come back in. The Mullen Rule would apply to me if I skip in the middle, not, you know, so.
Right, understood.
I don't think it'll be wrapped next meeting anyway, so you could come discuss more, bring more evidence.
No, we were, I checked with Rich Tabazinski, you know, it's just too soon for him to be ready, including talking to the Board of Health and all that, as much as we'd like to proceed quickly and I know you accommodate us. But the question after that is unfortunately, I have a series of Wednesday hearings already in September, so what dates do you have in September?
What is it, Monique, September what?
September 14th.
14?
September 14th and the 28th.
28, 14 and 28.
I'd also like to add, I was just looking through my schedule, I'm going to a concert on the 24th, so I will not be here on that night.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Oh, so there's two of us not here, so I guess most likely that would be.
Sorry, but I just, I caught that, I didn't want you.
He's not gonna be ready anyway.
But unfortunately to you folks, but it's gonna have to be September 28th because of my schedule.
It is what it is.
But it is what it is and we'll just make sure that's plenty of time for us to work on all these things, so.
Wake me up when September comes.
I'm sorry?
What is it?
Wake me up when September comes.
Oh.
See you in September, we're singing songs over here.
All right, so, I strongly recommend your engineer get a contact with Mr. Rowley and hush things out. It is very important, makes our life easier and we understand it more. And like I said, do your homework and we'll see you, I guess, next time.
Yeah, so you continue to September 28th?
12, 14.
No, because I can't make.
14's no good for you?
No, unfortunately.
Okay, what's the statute on 40B, how long, from opening the hearing?
As long as we agree, I think we can.
The regulation says 180 days, but I think we'll be done well before that.
No, I believe 40B from the day of opening, I think 40 days we have to render a decision.
No, no, I can assure you, wouldn't steer wrong, in fact, I brought the regs if you wanna look, but what it says is from the time the hearing is opened, which is tonight, you have 180 days, call it six months, to complete the hearing. And then you have the right to take another 40 days to deliberate and vote and write up the decision, which again, I frankly never seen a board take the extra 40 days, but.
So it's a lot more than regular hearing, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
I thought it was the opposite.
That's what they call expeditious, but in any case.
All right, very good. So, that being said, let's get a motion to continue till September 24th.
28th, I think.
28, sorry, sorry, sir.
So I move that, we continue till September 28th.
28, good, Counselor?
Second, you vote?
I second.
Okay, second for, by Rich, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. We see you on the 28th, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, appreciate your help, thank you. I'm gonna, I wanna keep this so I can go over.
Take it, you can keep it. Put it under your pillow, it'll help you sleep. Do you wanna put yours in or?
I didn't get a copy of the print, can I have a copy of the?
We only have two, you want this, you want this big thing, there's one in the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's tiny, but I'll go online, I'll go.
Just take that, take this.
Just need at least one copy.
No, I'll go online.
We'll keep one.
I'll go online.
Oh, Monique, where's that black agenda mine, like that?
The black, she didn't bring it over, the.
Sorry.
She tried, she tried to.
Consolidate.
She tried to consolidate.
All right, so. On the, the one, what's the deadline on 18 Highland, 23-22? I guess we got plenty of time.
Yeah, I don't know, but I know that, I'm pretty sure we have a lot of time.
It's a variance, so it's about 90 days from opening or application. We get time for that.
11/5/2022.
Oh, you have that, that's from before? Which one is it, 18? No, no, I want 18 Highland Road.
So it's 23, 23, 22, right?
Yeah, what's the deadline on that one?
So we opened it two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
The 27th?
I think it goes 90 days from filing the application for the variance. I'm sure, I don't have the regulation with me, but.
Can I get two minutes to go to the bathroom and we're gonna close this meeting?
I want, no, no, I wanna discuss something, why don't you go, come back, please?
Thank you.
Let me look at it.
Just for the record, Mr. Stempel stepped out for five minutes.
Now, did you get my email on Article 13?
Yes, I did.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's good.
Oh, yeah.
I hope they act on that. That's very important, they act on.
I think they will, because I talked to them afterwards to find out if they had time enough to actually put it on the warrant and hold the public hearing, and they said yes, so.
Would that go on the November town meeting?
Yeah. I think so.
November, is that November or October?
October.
Whenever it is.
Whatever.
Town meeting.
Fall meeting.
October.
October what?
I don't know the dates. 18 Highland Avenue was submitted on June 29th.
Submitted on June 29th.
So, 90 days from June 29th?
Yeah, we got time. So apparently on 18, when they come here, they're not gonna have a quorum because I won't be here on the 24th.
Rich won't?
Richard won't be here, so you don't have a quorum even, so.
It'll be me, Troy, and Veronica.
And Jake maybe, but Jake can't jump in because he was never here at the opening, so he can't, the Mullen Rule that.
But he can't vote on it, so it's moot.
It's moot, so there's no quorum.
So maybe we oughta tell him not to bother coming and continue them off until.
Yeah, so.
Can you do that for us?
Of course, yes.
All right, maybe, let's reverse that, let's reverse that decision on, okay, let's go back to 23-22 for Keaton, 18 Highland Road.
The continuation?
Yes, we're gonna reverse our decision. Okay, we need a motion to reverse that decision.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim to reverse decision for the continuance on 23-22, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
So I remove that we extend it to 9/14?
Okay, we have a motion to continue 23-22, John F. Keaton, 18 Highland Ave., till September 14, 2022, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Good. On other business stuff, I wanna discuss some things going on in town. On permits has been granted by us and the Planning Board that hasn't been followed properly. For instance, we grant this permit for such business or something and they're supposed to do the landscaping, do this and that, and they go out there, they do it for, when they do the, get the occupancy permit and next year, there's no landscaping, there's no things working. We have a great commissioner, Mr. Turner now, that he takes the time and go enforce these things, like he's willing to go and shut the job down. So for a perfect example, Starbucks, and this is a permit we granted for a drive-through, and I stopped by many times, I told them these dumpsters gotta go on the cage or on that thing you built for it.
Yep.
They said, oh, the dumpsters are bigger. I said, get a smaller one. And Mr., what, the chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Keaton, no, Mr. King? Yeah, Michael King? Mr. King went there also, talked to them, sure enough, no answer, so you get two dumpsters and basically on the road. So I believe, I think we should take action and call them back to come back to the hearing, otherwise shut them down.
I was just gonna say, I like the action that was taken on the 150-unit 40B project. You give them a cease and desist and they'll cooperate real fast.
Exactly. If that permit was granted to put the dumpsters where they belong, so apparently this permit is no good if they don't do this.
And there was another thing we granted about the traffic, that traffic comes out of there, wraps around, goes all the way around. I could've swore that it was an issue that we had and that they said that, oh, it wouldn't back up that far. I've seen it some mornings, it's all the way around blocking Walmart driveway. So I just don't know if that's another thing.
You can't, I mean, if they said there won't be traffic, now there's traffic, I don't think we could.
Well, I'm just asking, I thought there was something that we brought up that was something.
Well, if it's because, let's say we said, put a stop sign, and they didn't do it, then we could do something.
Okay.
Charlie, what did you wanna say?
Okay. The Starbucks area and that whole section there for Chipotle, for West Bend Dental and for Starbucks has been a topic of discussion with the Planning Board for a while. And when Richard Swenson was the chairman, he asked me to contact them to find out what they were going to do about those dumpsters because they were supposed to fit in that enclosure, which they've said, well, the truck can't get into the dumpster enclosure to pick up the containers, so we haven't done anything. So this was way back, several months ago. They said they were working on a plan to modify the dumpsters or the relocation of them to take that into consideration. Nothing ever came of it. The Planning Board got a little bit upset over that, that there was no action. So they did contact them two meetings ago and they were actually in a meeting, telecommunication meeting with them, and they were supposed to apply the Planning Board with an updated plan. That plan has not been seen. At the last Planning Board meeting, which was Monday night, they discussed it again and asked Monique to contact them and find out where the plan is. In addition to that, I did a inspection of the entire site back in November of last year before Chipotle's was opened. And I had a whole list of things that needed to be done to complete all of the site work there. It included the dumpsters, it included a hole under the transformer pad that's sitting outside next to Starbucks, it included some landscaping, the repair of the stormwater system that's over in the corner next to the outlet to Cranberry Highway. Inspection there showed broken irrigation lines. You go by there today and there are several plants that are now dead, perhaps because of the drought, but also because the irrigation system isn't working. So there was a whole list that was put together, which they got and were supposed to address. So there were some outstanding things there that the Planning Board is well aware of So there were some outstanding things there that the planning board is well aware of, and they're not very happy about it, so...
Right, so, but just for the record, we're not being, being, like, singling out Starbucks and Chipotle, there's other projects in town, so, so for the record, it's not only them. So, so I don't know, we're gonna talk to somebody. I wanna reach town council, see, I mean, I don't think we should, we should ask counsel, I think we should send our commissioner, he's our zoning enforcement officer, say, "Go, send them a notice, you have so many weeks to, or so many days to address the issue, otherwise, I'm putting that pink card on the wall, on the door."
Yeah, well, certainly, if they're in noncompliance with a special permit, it needs to be addressed.
Exactly. Other projects in town were with, it was promised by attorney Serkey, was it, Dave Serkey? Was it his name? You guys went here.
That's the landscape guy, right?
No, for the hall, parking lot, and the exit and entrance, when the, he was, it was promised, when the highway is done, he'll come back before us, and we address this issue.
That's right.
Mr. Rowley recalls that. Was it Dave Serkey his name, the attorney?
Oh, it was Richard Serkey.
Richard Serkey, Richard.
He's no longer with Winica, though.
Okay, so water was, water was also, we have to address this issue, because they went, bought a house or something, and they just paved everything, no site plan, nothing whatsoever, and I'm sure there's no drainage, no stormwater management, and they made cuts, curb cuts, entrance to the highways. Matter of fact, the other day, I was going by, so, and I was dead against two entrances for that place, because it goes crazy at 4:00, when everybody's leaving the park, or when the sun sets, or whatever. I think they close at 5:00. So I passed the first entrance, people going, so slam on the gas, go, yet again, the other entrance, somebody jumping, almost hit him. So I think these issues, and that's why I was against two curb cuts, and then the highways built, they put two curb cuts, they're supposed to come back before us for landscaping, lighting, all these things for the parking lot, that's something, I think we have to have our commissioner, our zoning officer, in law enforcement, go send them something that they have come back and address these issues. Also, we have some project in East Wareham, the dealership on that corner, next to Benny's, he has to do his landscaping. I know the highway took his land and stuff, whether he works to deal with the state to do his landscaping, and if they don't, that's his problem, it's not our problem. Same with the guy across the street, Buzzard's Way Garage, they gotta do the landscaping. There's special permits or variance granted with certain plans, and they have to adhere to it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
On the Buzzard's Way and the dealership, I hear you, and it looks like hell, but the state did rip it up, and they're, it's still ripped up, it's not done.
Right.
That's what they're gonna come back and tell us.
I understand, so that's why we should send them, send the commissioner, give them heads up, you gotta be working either with the state, go hunt the state, you're on our landscaping, come back and fix it.
Get the contract in.
So, don't think it's gonna stay like this, and we're gonna overlook, I'm not gonna overlook it, I don't know the rest of the board, I'm not gonna... Also, that big warehouse, the tire place, what's the name of it?
It's now Cape and Island Tire.
Yeah, also, they're supposed to, I mean, they did plant and stuff, but hopefully, when this is all said and done, the highway, they arrange it and do this, because there's literally some business don't even cut the grass, and they're doing great, it's not like they're broke. I mean, they don't maintain it, don't do nothing, they just build it, and that's the end of it, which is horrible, so...
Is all that, just waiting for all those poles to be removed, the communication poles?
Right.
Isn't that, I mean, aren't they still sitting out in the middle of the road, that they're waiting for those, so, I don't know if they're not doing it because of that.
Right, but this is something, I hope somebody's watching, that's something we're gonna be approaching soon, as soon as that highway's done. Right now...
Is that how it's done this year, or is there another year?
I think another year. I think another year. I think it's another, it was three-year project.
Five-year project originally, they said five years.
I saw three, but anyway, I don't think it'll be done this year. So, so this is something we're gonna be approaching, if the business owner listening, or whatever, they better start thinking about it. I definitely gonna approach our commissioner to talk to Starbucks, or send them something, Chipotle, Mr. Rowley, if you have, if you could send us an email of that the things need to be addressed.
Wareham Retail Management is the owner of all that property.
Yeah, well, they're gonna have to address the issue, so we should send them a letter, they better address their stuff, and are we gonna shut them down? Another issue I wanna discuss, the Old Wareham Pharmacy. Old Wareham Pharmacy, I believe that our commissioner today went and stopped the work. As you recall, they came here and get a variance, a used variance, you recall that?
Storage, right.
Right, they get a variance, they get appealed, then they won the appeal, so they get the variance. For some reason, it's such a huge company, I believe, for some reason, they thought they have a permit to go start build. I recall very clearly that this is only, I voted against it that time, that's only a used variance, you gotta come back for a site plan review, and they never did. So they assume whatever they, the plan they provided, they could go build, so...
On that matter, I've been in contact, this week, on that matter.
By who?
By their council.
And what did he say?
He said, "What do we gotta do?" So I contacted the planning department, we reviewed the file, remember one day I left you a message, I said I'm gonna...
Ah, okay, yes, yes.
Okay, I just didn't want, but we never got a chance to speak, so, so the developer, pretty much you've explained it correctly, they thought, they didn't win their case, the person that was challenging them withdrew.
Okay.
So it's as good as winning, maybe better, I don't know. So their counselor now knows, or believes, yes, they got their used variance, the case was dropped, so now they gotta come back and do a site plan review.
Okay, so they...
They're gonna do an application, he's been, he may have been in to see you already, if not, no, Monique, if not, he'll be in, looking to do a site plan review.
Well, they better act on a quick...
They didn't do anything, they didn't start tearing the building down, they didn't start construction, everything they did was peel pavement, but they were...
Right, but they cut the trees, that's over 50,000 square feet, you can't do it without a site plan approval. Now they have a 40 buffer, I believe, what's the buffer between commercial and residential? What's our buffer zone, our regulation, 20, 30? Charlie, recall?
Not without looking, I don't.
I think that's, first of all, it's, that's industrial land, so between industrial and residential, I think 40 buffer, they clear to the, right to the property line, which is residential behind them, isn't behind them residential?
It's, I think it's industrial also.
It's industrial?
I think it includes Great Hill Mobile Home Park.
Okay, but there should be some kind of buffer, even if, even if it's industrial.
Industrial to industrial, it's still a buffer.
Yeah, so they cleared to the line, and it's over 50,000 square feet, you need a special permit by planning or zoning to go start do the work. Actually, taking the building, they don't need a special site plan review, they could just take the building down, just by simple building permit. But, so hopefully, they come, because I think the commissioner stopped them today.
They are coming, oh, it's...
They're gonna have to.
Their counselor is going back to, they, somehow they, somehow they believe, they went for a peer review from some company in New Hampshire, and they believed that was, and they said, "No, no, 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 that was, you know, you don't hire your own peer reviewer to review your plan." The town will, you know, we'll have, the town will pick who's gonna do the review, the peer review, not, and...
Well, as long as they're gonna come...
They understand it now.
Well, I guess they're gonna have to, because there was a cease and desist on them today, so they have no choice. I figure I fill you in because...
No, that's good, so, so I, again, I was, I apologize, because I was emphatic about going to the planning board meeting, and then an hour before the meeting, I found out I couldn't go. How did you guys, who won the fight? You know, did anybody bleed, or...
Other than somebody rolling their eyes, I didn't notice, Richard did.
So what happened? Did we accomplish anything? Did we waste a lot of time? There's agreement, disagreement?
No, there was no agreement.
It was good, because we created a platform that we can talk to one another if we have a problem, because nobody's been coming to them, telling them that we have a problem, so now it sounds like this communication platform that we can work with.
Madam Selakman, you have to speak to the mic, otherwise he'll yell at us, Bob will yell at us.
Bob, the guy behind the curtain will just get mad, yell at you, yeah.
So I'm sorry for interrupting, but I will tell you, I was the last meeting to stay. As the liaison between both you guys and the planning board, my big comment was, it was great to see you all work together, and start to develop that platform so you can, because, you know, just as a citizen, I've heard the rumblings for a year and a half now, about these never work together. I think that, I think you made a huge step there, and if you leverage it right, I think things will go a lot smoother.
It has to be used, though.
Yeah, it has to be used, you have to use it, but it was really good to see.
10 feet, industrial to industrial?
Industrial to industrial, or the micro to industrial?
Is 10. Industrial to two-family, multifamily is 40.
Oh, that's what I...
That's one of the things that was being discussed as a change, they wanted to change it from 10 to 20, correct?
Yep.
But Charlie, isn't that multifamily in the back?
That's, no, I don't believe so.
It's, but it's a trailer, so it's living.
I know, but they've been there since, what, 1969, 1970? So I think they're in the industrial zone, I can't state for sure, but I think so.
Right, but it's used as a residential.
It's, so, but the zone is the zone.
No, no, it's not the zone. Okay, let me, let me, let me explain it different way.
Okay.
If, on Cranberry Highway, if there's a house on a lot, okay? For instance, across from Val's, there's a bunch of houses, I own a couple of them. If I to develop this property, it's a general commercial, next to me, there's a house on a general commercial lot.
With a residential yield.
But general commercial to general commercial is 10 feet, but because I'm, I wanna develop as general commercial, he's a resident, it's a residential general commercial, I have to do 20 feet.
Yeah, the buffers refer to usage, not, not the zone.
Right, so the usage, I know it's industrial land, but the usage is residential. Trailers are residential, so they need to have 40 feet buffer.
Well, when the plan comes in, you'll be able to see.
Right, I mean, unless the industrial, unless the trailer owners, they're manufacturing something there, it's different story.
No, it's been residential since they built it.
Right.